I'd like to call a meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united up in invisible liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Our invocation is Pastor Todd Forrest is here from Fountain Hills Christian Center. Oh, and he's injured.
I turned.
Okay?
I turned 50. You ought to have seen the other guy.
Good answer.
Let's pray. Lord, I thank you for this day. I thank you, Lord Jesus, that we are celebrating today a day that we live in a country that we can be a part of the process, that we can be a part of freedom, that we can let our voice be heard. And, Lord, we pause for a moment today to thank you for our great nation. And, Lord, I thank you for the town we live in also, and I pray that you would guide and direct our proceedings and meeting today. Lord, thank you for these council members and our mayor that have served so diligently. And, Lord, I thank you for the privilege that we have of being able to come to you and ask for your grace, your mercy, and your guidance for our great city. And I pray that you would guide us tonight in your name, Lord Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Todd. Can we roll call, please, Liz?
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tolles.
Here.
Councilmember Legay.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember LaCron.
Here.
Councilmember DePorter.
Here.
Councilmember Magazine.
Thanks, Liz. Okay, we'll start off with a proclamation for Poland's Independence Day. I think everybody knows that one of our sister cities is Zamosz, Poland, and we just had some great visitors from the kids who came here for a few weeks. And, of course, our students have gone there on more than one occasion. So, it's been a great relationship so far with Zamosz, Poland. Whereas the citizens of the city of Zamosz, Poland and the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, USA, formed a sister-city relationship in June of 2014 and are committed to a partnership that promotes peace and prosperity through people-to-people exchanges and citizen diplomacy. And whereas a delegation from the town of Fountain Hills traveled to Zamosz, Poland to officially establish the sister-city relationship and witnessed firsthand the beauty, culture, architecture, and hospitality of Poland. And whereas the town of Fountain Hills recognizes the valuable contributions made by its distinguished citizens and town employees who are of Polish heritage. And whereas Polish-Americans throughout the state of Arizona and throughout the United States of America have a deeply rooted commitment to the values of family, faith, democracy, hard work, and fulfillment of the American dream. And whereas Poland celebrates Polish military heroes, Tadusz Kojusko and Kashmir Pulaski, who helped secure the independence of the emergent republic during the Revolutionary War. And whereas Independence Day in Poland celebrates Poland's independence after 123 years of foreign occupation and portioned land. And whereas we celebrate the many contributions that Americans of Polish heritage have made to our nation's history and culture, we also reaffirm the strong ties between the United States and Poland. Now, therefore, I, Lyntam Kavanaugh, mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the town's recognition and celebration of Poland's Independence Day on November 11, 2018. Okay, before we get started, I just want to make one announcement. If you look at your agenda, item G, which really was just for discussion related to the shoulder paving Fountain Hills Boulevard, is going to be postponed to a future meeting. So, G, if that's the only thing you came for, just wanted to let you know that that is off the agenda. And do we have any calls to the public?
Yes, Mayor, we have one from Walter Maywald or Maywald? Not sure how you pronounce it. Maywald.
What's the country you're in?
I said Kojusko, right? Yeah?
Good evening. My name is Walter Maywald. I'm a four-year resident of Fountain Hills, and I'm an avid hiker and a trail builder in town. And I understand that there will be an Adaro Canyon Trailhead opening ceremony on November 17th. From what I have been able to discern, this will be a very low-key ceremony. My question is why? Town residents have been waiting for this trailhead for over 10 years. Should they be excluded from this opening, or is this merely a photo op for VIPs? Allowing residents to attend will not cost the town a dime. And finally, and more importantly, will the trailhead remain open after this ceremony for the residents to enjoy? If not, why have this ceremony?
Okay.
And also, while I'm at it, in regards to the land swap, I'm definitely in favor of that because that would create more recreational space for our residents. Thank you.
Okay. Can we answer that? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. The gentleman is correct. It is a little bit more low-key. The reason for that, sir, is we're going to do two different types of events. The first event is the dedication, which is the official opening of the trail and the trailhead. The reason for that is that the road up there is not completed. And we're very concerned about people just showing up and causing damage to their vehicles and having claims eventually come back to the town. It's not really a drivable situation for people that might be driving sedans. I've been up there. I was just up there last week, and I do not think it's ideal. It will be open to the public soon as it is dedicated. We're going to have portable restrooms up there. Utilities are not running up there until Toll Brothers gets the permanent utilities up there, which we anticipate may be as soon as May or June. And then I've talked to the chair of the MMPC. That's the commission that actually serves and advises the council on this. And we're going to be doing a much more, in his mind, a blowout where we're going to have a big event right after that's done because then the public will really have an easier time accessing the trail as it was originally intended. But that is true, and there was a reason for that.
Okay. And probably we should have made that more public why so. I apologize for the misunderstanding, but there will be, like Grady said, a bigger opening when it's safe to go that way. Okay? Good. Thanks. Okay, let's go on to, let's see, our consent agenda. And we have four that are listed. Can I have a motion to approve?
No move.
And a second?
Okay.
Okay, and I need a roll call vote for that.
Councilmember LaCron.
Aye.
Councilmember DePorter.
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tolles.
Aye.
Councilmember Legay.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
I'll have to abstain. I was not at the meeting.
Regular agenda item, starting with consideration of resolution 2018-61 approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community related to Prop 202 funding. Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, this item before you is an intergovernmental agreement, which basically, as you're aware, Proposition 202 was approved by voters several years ago. It allows cities and towns and nonprofits that are near and adjacent to Indian gaming casinos to benefit from Indian gaming to the tune of about 12% a year from the Indian gaming revenues. In fact, our town is a recipient of about $25,000 from the Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community as well. But this item before you is basically allowing the town to serve as a pass-through to other organizations that apply for and receive grant funding through the Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community. I recommend approval of this and would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions for Grady or Rachel? I see Rachel's here. No? The only thing that I'd like to say is that we are extremely grateful for Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community for acknowledging a few years ago that we are their neighbors and thinking about how we can work together for tourism. A good friend of mine is the president, Delbert Ray, and we established a really great relationship and friendship that I think is going to continue for many years from now. Their extreme generosity, the tourism, I know is going to greatly benefit from this. And as we know, we also received 202 money from Fort McDowell. So, we're grateful to both tribes for their generosity, and we're really great, great, it's wonderful that they are our neighbors and we can work with them on tourism. Anybody else have anything? If not, can I get a motion for this?
No move.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Any speaker cards? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next is consideration of appointing two planning and zoning commissioners, and I will start that off. I nominate Eric Hansen and Peter Gray for the two planning and zoning commission seats for two-year term beginning on November 7, 2018, until September 30, 2020. I'm looking for a second on that.
Second.
Okay. Any speaker cards? Okay. Any council discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eric is already on P&amp;Z. He's been on since 2016, so we're grateful that, Eric's not here, I don't see him, but we're very grateful that he is willing to give up another two years for us. P&amp;Z is probably one of our, I'd say, toughest commissions because there's an awful lot to read and study, and a lot of times they have to go out to the sites. So, anybody on that commission really puts in a tremendous amount of work. And, of course, Peter Gray is new to it, and just knowing Peter Gray from past meetings and past encounters with him, I think he'll be just great on that commission. Let's see. Bob, you're up already. For items under 7C-1 and 7C-2, there'll be one staff report, and public input will be taken on C-2. With that, I will open the public hearing to receive comments on ordinance 18-13 amending the town of Fountain Hills town code, Article 9, Section 953, by revising the general regulations governing the Fountain Hills-McDowell Mountain Preserve, case number Z2018-05.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I have one staff report for C-1 through C-6, so I only bother you once on this.
All the way to C-6? All right.
They're all related. Toll Brothers is currently designing the Phase 2 parcels in Adaro Canyon. Parcels 5 and 6 have presented challenges in grading due to the steepness of some of the slopes. In order to not have to redesign large areas of the two parcels, Toll Brothers has requested that they be allowed to perform some cut grading along what would be the rear property lines of about eight lots in Parcels 5 and 6. This grading would extend into the Fountain Hills-McDowell Mountain Preserve and affect areas slightly less than one acre, one and a half acres. And that's shown in the red, which is really faded there, but you should have slides probably on here. The proposed cuts are just south of the town's trailhead, albeit significantly downhill. Only a small portion of the affected areas will be visible from the trailhead, maybe about a half an acre. The cut areas will be visible from Parcels 5 and 6 from the new houses that will be built back up to those areas. And the next slide will actually show that a little bit better. In exchange for permission for performing these grading, and the town preserve property, Toll has offered to donate Parcel 9, which is about 82 acres, to the town so that it may be added to the preserve. And that's shown in yellow. Parcel 9 is a large rugged ridge that runs about from the cul-de-sac of Parcel 10 down southeasterly, down behind Parcels 7, 8, and 10, and until it ends near Sunridge Canyon's private open space parcel, which is adjacent to their driving range. Parcel 9 shares over 4,700 feet along its northern boundary with the preserve. I ask the town's GIS technician to provide some cross-section views of the cut areas as if you're looking down at the cuts from the ramada at the trailhead to see just how visible the cuts would be. While all the cut areas are going to be visible from the house lots, they'll be backing up to them in Adaro Canyon, Cross-sections B and C clearly show that the cut areas directly below the trailhead will not be visible from the ramada at all. Cross-section A, which is the top one, shows that the cut areas will be partially visible because they're further away and they're actually along the side of the ridge rather than at the bottom of the ridge straight down. These are some of the pictures provided by Toll Brothers of Parcel 8, or Parcel 9, rather, as seen from Parcel 8. The foreground area that looks like it may have been cleared is actually the original proposed roadway stub from MCO's proposal from Parcel 9 to go into this parcel, or from Parcel 8 into this parcel. MCO had anticipated using this for hillside custom homes in their original Adaro Canyon proposal. Toll, however, was not proposing to do this. Currently, both the town code and the zoning ordinance specifically do not allow encroachments for anything other than the trailhead and the trail maintenance within the preserve. Ordinance 1813 amends the town code and 1814 amends the zoning ordinance so that the town council will be authorized, when deemed appropriate, to grant encroachments for other activities within the preserve. The granting of any such encroachments would still have to be done through a public hearing process. Resolution 1856 will accept Parcel 9 as a gift and add its 82 acres to the McDowell Planning and zoning commission forwarded a unanimous recommendation to council to approve the two ordinance amendments and the resolution as presented. It's my understanding that had it been presented to the MMPC, while they didn't vote on it, their consensus was to approve it as well, and I believe there are some representatives in the audience if you have questions for them. Staff recommends approval of the ordinances as presented, as well as the resolution as presented. That concludes my presentation. There are representatives from Toll Brothers also in the audience.
Thank you. Questions for Bob? Mayor? Councilman?
Bob? I read this in the materials, but I just wanted to verify. There was a habitat study done. Is that accurate? And there was a conclusion that this encroachment would not disturb the habitat?
Yeah, there was a habitat study done in the original, for the original PAD. And, yeah, there was no, what do they call them, sensitive critters or fauna, flora fauna in the site.
Thank you.
Councilman?
Just a comment. I feel like it's a generous trade for that encroachment area to add a lot of acreage to the preserve. And I saw smiling faces from the MMPC representatives that were walking in, not frowns. So, it sounds like it's something that they, they're also on board with, like you said. So, to me, it seems like a win-win situation.
Mayor, if I may, could we have a representative from MMPC step up, maybe Bill?
Sure. Looking pretty cash tonight. I said you're looking pretty cash tonight. Casual.
He's got his Andrew Kinsey trail shirt on.
Yes, thank you very much, councilman mayor. Mr. Miller, Mr. Aronson, my name is Bill Myers. I'm on the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission and have been for a number of years. I'm really here just briefly to talk in support of Resolution 2018-56, which is accepting, have the town accept the gift of about 82 acres without giving up a whole lot of other kinds of things. I know the 82 acres, and it is directly south of our South Leg. I walked on that ground. Heaven forbid, I'm sure I'm trespassing. I've also walked on our South Leg, which is just up north of the 82 acres. It's great ground. That's a very steep slope in there. I understand, being an old developer myself, why this may not be the best ground to put houses on or roads on, but it's great for preserve. Because I understand that it's just contiguous, that is, there's no one foot strip between our current leg and the 82 acres. I like to give a little comparison about, I do this frequently, about how big our preserve is or specifically how big this 82 acres is. Our town lake, the lake itself, is about 29 acres. The whole park is about 64 acres. So, this chunk of 82 acres is about one and a third times the entire size of our park. If you walk around the park, about a mile and a half on the outside, it's a pretty good walk. So, this is a very good chunk of ground. Again, I've walked on all of this ground, and it's very steep. However, it'll give an opportunity for the MMPC and the Sonoran Conservancy to possibly put another trail here. It'll give a little bit more latitude. One of the objectives of the MMPC for 2019 is to establish another trail or two. Just a brief recap. Right now, the town owns 740 acres. If they accept this deed, it'll be 822 acres. Within the town, there's also another 200 acres that's owned by another entity. So, in total, we'll have a little over 1,000 acres in our preserve. For a town that's about 14,000 acres, that's a pretty good chunk. It's good economically. That is, the preserve and the trailhead, I'm talking a little bit more generically now. It's good economically for our town. It's going to bring in more money for hotel rooms and hot dogs, that kind of thing. I'm happy to have the preserve and the trailhead done, or very close to being done. Thank you, everybody. It'll give a lot more ambiance to our whole town, and if you own anything here in town, having that preserve and the trailhead is going to increase the value of your property, whatever it is. Finally, I just want to express my deep gratitude to Mayor Kavanaugh, this council, previous mayors, previous councils, and the town of Fountain Hills voters for getting the right votes a dozen years ago to get the money to buy our trails and the preserve and the trailhead, and it's going to be a great boon for our town. So, thank you very much, everybody who is involved on the dais, people in back of me, and hundreds of other peoples who aren't even here today. So, my deepest gratitude. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I didn't have a chance to ask you a question.
Oh, true. All right. I had all my talking points there.
You answered all my questions, so I appreciate it. And I think it was important for myself, perhaps the rest of the council, to hear you, as the chair, come before us and have such a great support for this land swap, this particular trade. It's important for me, in terms of my vote, that MMPC is in full support of this particular initiative. So, thank you for speaking with us, and thank you for all the work yourself and your team has done over the years. I mean, y'all have championed this and have done a tremendous job. Thank you.
Glad to see it come to fruition. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Bill? Or Bill? Bill is here too, from the Sonoran Conservancy. Would you like to make any comment, Bill?
Sure.
Sure, come on.
Thank you.
I'm Bill Craig. I have the fortune, good fortune, to be director of the town's Trail Builders. We design, construct, and maintain the trails that are in the preserve as well as the lake overlook, and we help the women at the Botanical Garden. I'm just here to say that the Trail Builders are very much in favor of Resolution 2018-56. A short statement relative to that. We have hopes, as Bill mentioned, of adding to the recreation available in the preserve by putting a new trail down the leg, which is adjacent to this 82 acres. One slight item, there is a beautiful knob right at the top, the end of the preserve or the end of the ridge that that leg is on. Unfortunately, it's not in the preserve, but it is in that 82 acres, and it would be a beautiful spot to have a panoramic view over the valley that we enjoy. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Any other comments? Okay. And speaker cards? Any others?
No. I just had two speaker cards from Mr. Craig and Mr. Myers.
Okay. All right. And with that, I will close the public hearing. Consideration of ordinance 18-13 amending the town of Fountain Hills Code, Article 9, Section 953, by revising the general regulations governing the Fountain Hills-McDowell Mountain Preserve, case number Z2018-05. Any further council discussion? If not, look for a motion?
No move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The next section, I will open the public hearing to receive comments on ordinance number 18-14 amending the town of Fountain Hills zoning ordinance, Chapter 9, Section 9.02.C, by revising provisions related to permitted uses within the open space preservation zoning district, case number Z2018-05. Grady or Bob?
I'll go ahead and call upon the Development Services Director, who is going to give a brief report.
Yeah, I didn't have anything more than, other than the presentation I already gave you for this, too.
Okay. Any other questions for Bob? Any speaker cards? Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing. Consideration of ordinance number 18-14 amending the town of Fountain Hills zoning ordinance, Chapter 9, Section 9.02.C, by revising provisions related to permitted uses within the open space preservation zoning district, KC2018-05. Any other council discussion? Can I get a motion?
No move.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consideration of Resolution 2018-56 approving the acquisition by gift of Parcel 9 in Adaro Canyon, consisting of approximately 82 acres, to be added to the Fountain Hills-McDowell Mountain Preserve as dedicated preservation open space. Any speaker cards? Nope. Council discussion? Nope. Okay. Motion?
No move.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
As a motion by, sorry, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consideration of approving the issuance of an encroachment permit to allow cut grading and stabilization activities on approximately one and a half acres of Fountain Hills-McDowell Mountain Preserve in specifically identified areas along the real property lines of Parcel 5 and 6 in Adaro Canyon. Speaker cards? Nope. And council discussion? Motion? Looking for a motion?
No move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Bob. That's it, Bob.
I'm on the next one.
You are? It says Kenny.
No.
Oh. Okay. Consideration of Resolution 2018-57 approving an intergovernmental agreement between the town of Fountain Hills and the Fountain Hills Sanitary District for GIS and CID services. Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, the item before you is a relatively routine intergovernmental agreement between the town and the Fountain Hills Sanitary District. You're probably familiar with one of our employees. Mr. Valverde is our GIS employee. He actually does a lot of work for our town related to computer-aided design and GIS services. We've got a unique arrangement with the sanitary district in that he also helps them and assists them with their infrastructure and having that identified in the GIS. So, we have a sharing arrangement with them, and they also compensate the town for the use of his services. The item before you, this intergovernmental agreement, we had one previously. This has just been updated. The rates have also been updated to reflect more real-world costs for these services. And I think this is a really good arrangement between our town and the sanitary district. With that, unless you have any further questions of Mr. Rogers, I would recommend approval of this.
One thing I'd add to that is this IGA also One thing I'd add to that is, this IGA also now allows for data sharing between the two because the sanitary district is now creating their own GIS and CAD abilities, so data sharing back and forth will be helpful in the future as well.
Okay. Any questions for Bob? Speaker cards? Nope, okay, then I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consideration of approving the Adaro Canyon parcel two A final plat, thirteen lot, single family subdivision. Bob?
As it comes up here. Toe Brothers is requesting approval of the final plat for parcel two A in Adaro Canyon, Phase Two. This slide shows the various parcel locations. Two A is the bottom portion of parcel two, and is shown in the Adaro Canyon preliminary plat, and that's this area right here. This is parcel two. Will contain thirteen lots, and it'll be the location of their newest models. The whole of parcel two will ultimately contain fifty-seven house lots once the remainder of the parcel is platted and built. Staff has reviewed the plat, determined that it meets the town's requirements, and is ready for approval. There's one clarification that I need to make in reference to the town engineer's memo of October eighteenth, which was attached to the staff report. The fourth bullet point recommends that council approve future grading plans. That seems excessive, and it would cause unnecessary delays due to having to schedule hearings after the plans are approved by the town engineer. Staff recommends that council amend that bullet by striking the word "council," thereby allowing the town engineer to review and approve the grading plans as normally is done, rather than require that those plans be brought back to council each time a parcel is proposed to be graded. With that, staff recommends that council approve the final plat for Adaro Canyon, Phase Two, parcel two, as presented, subject to the stipulations in the staff report as amended.
Thank you, Bob. Any speaker cards? No? Okay, council discussion? Questions for Bob? Any questions? Motion?
I move to approve with, with stipulations.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Bob. Okay, I think that concludes Adaro Canyon. Thank you for coming. Thank you for all that, eighty-two acres. I'm still looking for the catch here, like you, we gave you one point five encroachment, and you gave us eighty-two. Consideration of ratifying the town manager emergency procurement authorization to contract with stabilizer solutions, two thousand nineteen dash zero four two, not to exceed one hundred and three thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars for emergency cleanup efforts at Golden Eagle Park. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and council. As you're aware, we had a unprecedented amount of water that fell on the town, two to three inches on October second. The staff initially had some assessments as to what this would cost to do the cleanup and restoration of the park, and as you remember, that cost for having a turnkey operation would be about six hundred thousand dollars. The staff and I thought that we could probably get that cost down. We also had a number of people reach out to us and offer their assistance, either as volunteers, or suggestions that we might reach out to others, contractors, people that have heavy-duty excavation equipment. We chose a company that has some background in doing this. This particular company has had some work doing similar types of restoration work. Concern is, if you have people that use heavy-duty equipment that goes ahead and moves the earth, you might actually have more damage that might, you know, this is more of a, like a surgical-type skill when you're using a piece of equipment like that versus just, you know, earthmoving. And so we have underneath the, the ground out there, we have quite a bit of invested with our irrigation system. We still have yet to know really what the full scale, if any, damages to our irrigation system. We also felt very, that was very important to move on this very quickly, and as you're aware, it already, we had a couple of weeks already passed. This company already started mobilizing last week. I believe they showed up on Tuesday and started working, it'll probably take a total of two to three weeks to do what needs to be done out there. Under our procurement code, there is a section that allows for these types of situations, what we would deem to be emergency situations, that the town manager has the ability to exceed his fifty thousand dollar authorization. But the way that we handle that is we come back to the council to seek your ratification of my action. We're coming before you next week, a week from tonight, to give you a bigger picture strategy on how we're going to be addressing this. This is just one big piece, but we're going to be coming before you next week with a bigger picture showing you the total scope of how we're going to be addressing the, the storm damage at Golden Eagle Park, and also the sources of funds that we're going to use, that we're recommending using, and we're going to be trying to also ask your, for your approval for us to expedite some of the contracts that we need to get going. We have Little League that wants to start up in January, we have some potential tournaments that come out, and so as soon as we can get that restored out there, the better it is for everybody, and a lot less pressure on the council and staff, and we can get that park back into its previous pristine condition. I know that our community services director, Rachel Goodwin, is here, if you have any questions about this. I highly recommend approval of this ratification of my action previously.
Questions from council? Questions?
Mayor, just a quick question. The hundred and three thousand, where is that coming from?
So we identified specific capital, we're going to charge it to the capital fund, but we are going to bring several different capital projects that we're going to recommend that we defer. So it's a good question. We have probably about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, this is what we're anticipating it's going to cost for everything, just at the park alone, not the, the wash maintenance or the dams. And so we believe, we've found some areas where we have savings within either the capital replacement fund or the capital improvement program. So it'll be a deferral of those items that are in those, so that we can afford it. Under our expenditure limitation in the state of Arizona, we cannot exceed our council-approved budget for this year. So in order to expend money that we didn't have for this specifically, we have to actually make cuts in the budget to be able to pay for these improvements.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? I just have one comment. The staff did a phenomenal job in cleaning up the rest of the park. They had that opened really fast, the kids were able to get on the play equipment, and that was just an amazing job what they did, because I saw it after the storm, and there was a lot of cleanup, and they took care of all of that. And it's understandable that we can't handle what happened on those ball fields, because I can't believe the amount of dirt that they've already scraped off that.
It, it is amazing, and you're going to hear more about this next week. One of the things I'm going to be recommending is that we, we hire an engineering firm to actually, comes up with a design on some of our washes, so that we, in the future, will only have water conveyed to those, to the park, because I think the, the debris, the dirt and all that, I think it could have been prevented. There's going to be some costs, though, and so that might be something we may have to go to, once we identify what that cost is, we'll see what we can do on our own, but it might be something we have to go to voters in the future, to see if the voters will consider that.
Okay. Yes?
Just real quick, and thanks to Councilman Tolles and the Rotary and a few other groups that went out there, and I saw you on Facebook painting, painting stuff and cleaning up the park along with the staff, so it's great that everyone's going out there to lend a hand where they can.
It's fun. I, I have a question. This is all in a flood zone. Is there any insurance, flood insurance, that can be acquired for anything in the future that could, could happen again?
This is actually specifically in the floodplain, and so it actually did what it was meant to do. You, you could probably get an insurance like that, it'd probably really break the bank, just like you can go to Lloyds of London and get insured for just about anything, but I can tell you what you'd probably pay on that, you'd, it would be a better investment to go invest in having a, a study done, and try to shore up what we can with drop structures in our washes, and try to do what we can to prevent water from, I mean, only having water flow into the park. But yeah, there, there's probably insurance, but not your traditional flood insurance. This, this is designed as a, basically as a flood structure, basically, with a dam. So it did what it was supposed to do, but we could look at that, and that would be something I could have the staff look at, but I really think, from what I've heard before, on other types of insurances that are available out there, you can do it, but I'm sure that the cost would far exceed what the improvements would take on this. But Craig, do you want to see if there's a, a way we can look into that? We have a financial advisor that actually works very closely with the town, and we can ask the financial advisor that, so that's a good question.
Okay, do we have any speaker cards on this item? No, any other council discussion? If not, someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
And a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're skipping G, there's no direction to the manager, a summary, no, okay, then just a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.